Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The school board meeting of August 27th, 2013 is now called to order. The time is 6:04 PM. We apologize for the delay, but we are going paperless. So we just wanted to be sure you were organized this evening. At this time, we request that all cell phones and pagers be turned off or put into the silent mode. We ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentations portion of the agenda. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance, one resolution, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, two items under business and finance, eight items under operations, four items under teaching and learning, three superintendent's recommendations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Subway.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mr. Scott. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. This evening, Mrs. Morgan will deliver the invocation, after which Mr. Scott will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I am offering not a prayer, but some thoughts as we begin tonight's meeting. We are meeting here as a school board and community to advance educational opportunities for every child in this district. We want to help our students be the best they can be. Let us take this moment to consider the importance of the responsibility each one of us has in raising and educating the children of this community. Let us remember to thank every member of this learning community, for whom educating children is a calling and a passion. Let us be patient as we work together, be open and transparent in our conduct, and be prepared to embrace challenge and change. Let us strive to do good here, to be honest and ethical in our dealings, and to serve the children of this district to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
At this time, please welcome Command Sergeant Major Sean Branham, Army instructor of the JROTC program at South Fort Myers High School, who will introduce Cadet Colonel Jacqueline Yurel presenting the colors this evening. Sergeant Major Branham retired after 24 years of active duty service, and is a veteran of Desert Shield, Desert Storm, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and Operation Enduring Freedom.
I would like to thank the school board for having us here tonight. The national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is presented by Cadet Colonel Jacqueline Yurel, Comma Na of the Wolfpack Academy Junior ROTC Program. Cadet Yurel is a senior and has received, and has achieved, a GPA of 4.48. She has participated in JRTC for the past four years. Cadet Yurel is also a member of the JRTC Exhibition Team, Drill Team, and Captain of the Swim Team. Her Female Armed Squad Exhibition Team placed first in the state last year. Cadet Yurel will attend University of Florida, where she will major in Psychology. Please join Cadet Yurel in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
After the special presentations portion of the agenda, we will have a brief recess if anyone would like to leave. They can do that then. I would like to invite the following individuals to please join me here at the lectern. Ms. Margaret Sariani and Mr. David LaRosa from Fort Myers High School, the principal. During his 38 years at Fort Myers High School, Sam Sariani, better known as Coach Sam, held coaching positions in football, golf, and basketball. He served as the head coach of the Green Wave Football Team for 33 years, during which time he led the team to 20 county titles, two state semifinal appearances, and three seasons undefeated seasons. On and off the field, Coach Sam touched the lives of thousands of students through his teaching and coaching. He educated them to realize the rewards of teamwork, fellowship, sportsmanship, communication, and physical conditioning. In 2010, the Florida High School Athletic Association honored Coach Sam posthumously by inducting him into the Athletic Hall of Fame. This was the ultimate acknowledgement of his distinguished career and his lifelong achievements. Madam Chair, in recognition of Coach Sam's selfless dedication to his profession, I wholeheartedly move for adoption the resolution proclaiming August 30th as Sam Sariani Day. I have two resolutions here, and I'm going to give one to Ms. Sam, as a lot of people affectionately call her, and I'm also going to give one to David, so that he can put it in the school. And I will ask Ms. Sam if she would like to say a few things.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Graham, it is indeed an honor to be here tonight for this board and this school district to continue honoring Sam, who gave his life to this district, but he didn't think he was going to work every day. It was such a joy for him. And someone asked him one time about his job, and he said, "Are you talking about my joy? I don't have a job." He couldn't wait to get there, and I think people that worked with him were aware of that. He didn't have a clock. He never went by a clock. He was there before daylight, and he was there late at night, and a lot of us were, because we loved our jobs. And I think the recognition given him here tonight makes it very clear that this is a beautiful district to spend your life in. And we certainly did. We came here August 3rd, 1959. He had just graduated from Marshall University. He was hired because he went into the athletic office. He had two contracts to sign up there, and hadn't made up his mind, and he's in the athletic office, and all of a sudden, someone said, "Anybody want to go to Fort Myers, Florida? There's someone on the phone, they're looking for an assistant coach." So Sam said, "Let me talk to them." So he got on the phone and talked to C.R. Barker, who was the assistant principal at Fort Myers High School. That was a Marshall graduate. He was hired on the phone. We went over to the library to find out where Fort Myers was, and we pulled in here in 1959, and we truly were the West Virginia hillbillies. 56 Ford, no air conditioning, and everything we owned was in the backseat, and the seat was tied on top of the car. Now pull into a gymnasium and meet Coach Tremont, Coach Delay, Coach Ferrera, looking like that. That was us. They wrapped their arms around us like everyone in this community and this school district has done over the years, and made this our home. In 1962, Coach Corum from West Virginia University called him and offered him a graduate fellowship to get his master's. He goes up there for a year, and we come back home. About two years later, they call and offer him the best high school in the state of he thought it was. I'm not so sure. I thought my high school was, but he thought Wheeling High School was the best in the state, and they offered him Wheeling High School, the gentleman that had been there for years. So he goes back for four years, and I don't know, I think Ms. Graham might know this, because when she worked with us, Stephanie had pneumonia every winter. So the fourth winter, it was in both lungs, and she's in an oxygen tent. Dr. Nam called us out into the hall and said, "You're gonna have to get this child out of this weather." We were right on the high river, cold, damp winters. I know you're not interested in that, but the reason I'm pointing this out is, we came back, never to leave again. Even though it was offered college jobs and other wonderful positions, we knew that someone up above, our dear Lord, brought us here to begin with, and there was no intention for us to go anywhere else. And we both spent our careers here. Our children have been part of the school district. Our daughter's now in Broward County, but our son's still here, and this is our home. And I hope that every employee of the Lee County School District loves this school's district and this community like Sam and I did, and for our district and our county and our city to honor him in the manner in which they've done. I can just hear him. People that knew him knew he was an humble man. He would turn to me and say, "Mark, what's all this about?" He loved the kids, he loved the adults, he loved the people he worked with, and never complained. It's not easy to get up here, even though this is the 11th year. I'm getting ready to go back to West Virginia for my 60th high school reunion, so go ahead and add it up.[742.19][742.19](Laughter) I graduated when I was 17. Anyway, it's gonna be hard, because I'm not going with him, but I know he'll be there. Thank you so much, and there's a special principal standing right behind me that I have never worked for as an employee, but I certainly have worked with him as a volunteer, and he's pure class, and I would love for Mr. LaRosa to say a word or two.
How am I gonna top that? On behalf of Fort Myers High School, I also would like to thank the board and Dr. Graham for keeping Coach Sam's spirits alive here in Lee County. I'm one of those individuals who he touched. Back in 1986, he brought me down here from West Virginia. He and I were from the same hometown in West Virginia, and he brought me down to Lee County. I didn't initially go to Fort Myers High School, but he is responsible for bringing me to this district 27 years ago, and he had a great influence on my life while I've been here. But again, on behalf of our student staff at the school, I want to thank you all for keeping his spirit alive.
Thank you, Mrs. Sariani and Mr. LaRosa. At this time, if anyone would like to leave the auditorium, this would be the time to do it. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Fisher, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room, and include the requirement that any speaker wishes to address the school board to endorse a purchase of a product or a service in which that speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers, or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allowed for speakers, three minutes. Ms. Fisher, I have four cards this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not complete a card but wishes to speak? Anybody on the left side of the auditorium? Mr. Martin, please call the first card.
First speaker is Ms. Kathleen Robinson.
Wow, you put the green light on, and I didn't even say anything yet.
Just for you.[1058.13][1058.13](Laughter)
Good afternoon, school board members, and Ms. Graham.
How are you?
How are you?
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Very much.
I'm so sorry it took me so long to come here and greet you and tell you congratulations, but I've been working.
I'm sure you have.[1073.23][1073.23](Laughter)
I just want to say a little thing to you, Ms. Graham. You know, I've known you a long time, way back.
Way back.
It's when Cassine was, and now he's, but anyway, I've always watched you, you know? You know that. And I never thought that I would get to see you here, where you are, and I'm so excited over it, I really am, because I know you, and I know you're gonna do a good job. School board members, I went to the delegate assembly at the beginning of July, and I always loved politics, and I was, you know, I had to go. I paid my money to go, and I enjoyed it, and I brought my grandchildren with me, because I want them to get involved in that sort of thing, too. And they had a bully podium there. They were talking about bullying and the different things that are happening in our society. And you know, Ms. Fisher, I know how hard you worked to bring all of that to us, and the different places you went to bring awareness of this. So because of that, I got you a T-shirt, and I want you to wear it, and it has to do with bullying.
Oh, that's great. I will wear it very proudly. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson.
And it's from my heart.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm locked out.[1177.01][1177.01](Laughter)
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Mr. Martin, next card, please.
Mr. Paul Barnes.
My name is Paul Barnes, and I'm an 18-year veteran of Lee County School District. I'm here to talk about Common Core, and why Common Core must go, and must go now. Common Core was started in 2009 by Achieve Inc., located in Washington, D.C., and is a group founded by Microsoft Bill Gates, the National Governor's Association, and the Council of Chief State Officers. In designing Common Core, no input came from our state or local leaders. Matter of fact, most states adopted Common Core without even knowing the standards in order to obtain federal monies. This includes Florida. Common Core can't be changed or modified through normal channels, such as your teacher, principal, superintendent, school board, state legislator, or even a member of Congress. There is no local or parental control, including the school board, over our children's education. Twenty of the 45 states that currently have Common Core have legislation in works to remove it. This includes Florida. There will be extensive data mining of our kids and teachers using devices such as facial expression cameras, posture analysis seats, a pressure mouse, and wireless skin conductance sensors. Sounds like fun, huh? Students in Polk County have already undergone iris scanning without parental authorization. This kind of psychological manipulation, data mining, and monitoring of innocent children and their families is unacceptable in a free nation, period. And if you think we'll just pull my kid from public school and send him to private school, or maybe homeschool, nope, won't work. They are implementing Common Core for all of them. States are constitutionally granted the right to educate our citizens, and Common Core denies that right and ignores our Tenth Amendment right. The federal government has no business in the education of our children. This is a state's rights issue, and I demand my school board and my government to stand up and remove Common Core from our schools now. Common Core also violates three federal statutes. Number one, General Education Provisions Act. Number two, Department of Education Organization Act. Number three, Elementary and Secondary Education of 1965. In math, our kids will be two years behind the world by the end of eighth grade. English, our kids will be reading at a sixth to eighth grade level by the end of high school, and will be reading pornographic material as well, starting in 11th grade. I have facts on all this. Who is writing the curriculum? You should know who's behind the development of Common Core. The national computerized tests are being created by Partnership for Assessment for College and Careers, also known as PARC, and Smarter Balance. The U.S. Department of Education gave both of them 360 million of your money. Of course, once the money runs out, guess who's left holding the bag? Yes, us, the states. I must also mention Smarter Balance is advised by none other than the well-known socialist, American terrorist, and founder of Weather Out Around, Bill Ayers. I'm no expert, but from what I read, it appears that Common Core is purposely dumbing down our students. The information gathered from our children will be used to help guide them into a profession, better suited for them personally. Isn't this what communist countries like China already do? Congressman Trey Adal once said, and I agree, "Common Core is basically Obamacare for education." In closing, I'd like to quote a famous American writer, H.L. Mencken, "The aim of, quote, 'The aim of public education is not to spread enlightenment at all. It is simply to reduce as many individuals as possible to the same safe level to breed a standard sedentary, to put down dissent and originality.'" And also, following what you say, the school board's goal is to get the budget education for our students? Common Core is nowhere near the best education for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Next speaker is Ms. Kathleen Cherosea.
Good evening, school board members. I'm here to speak on the June 4th school board meeting. A motion was made by Mr. Tom Scott and seconded by Ms. Fisher, and it carried three to one to direct the staff to begin RFD process on the 1st of October to secure a firm to conduct the superintendent's search. I spoke with Mr. Martin, who told me that some kind of action needs to be made, a motion needs to be made to rescind this. Here's my problem with this whole situation. According to the June 4th, 2013 minutes, Mr. Armstrong stated that the agreement was to give Dr. Graham a one-year contract and begin a search, and he also stated he would rescind his vote if this process did not happen in 60 to 90 days, along with Mrs. Morgan stating her stance was the same as Mr. Armstrong's. This is recorded in the minutes. Ms. Morgan also expressed her concerns that in September, a majority of the board would decide they would not want to do this. How did she know this, if only it was decided in August that this wouldn't happen? Mr. Scott stated the search was decided on, and that he would not change his mind. And a decision was made in August. Mrs. Fisher noted that an agreement has been made, and a plan to start the RFP process October 1st. Ms. Fisher noted that agreement was made, and the board is committed. I believe she gave her word. So in my humble opinion, when someone is a man or a woman of their word, it means to keep a promise, and when you take someone at their word, you act on the assumption that they mean what they say. So exactly what did happen here? First of all, Dr. Graham did not have any problem with the search, and I believe that she's confident enough with herself. So why did the board not want to do this? Secondly, if no search was gonna happen, like Ms. Morgan predicted, why come to an agreement, give your word, take a vote? Seems a bit deceptive to me. I was at this meeting, along with others, who watched it on television, and we all believed that a national search would happen. It was reported in the news press that the news, that a search would happen. We all believed you when you gave your word. What a huge disappointment to read, that you won't do a search. Two months after this promised agreement, motion was made. People do not forget these kind of actions. So where do we go from here? Actions have to be taken, am I right, Mr. Martin? Please advise us. My next point of concern is how the public comments are written in the minutes. I spoke at a school board meeting on June 18th and said a lot more than one line, asking for clarification of a policy. In fact, after I spoke, when the vote to revise the policy was taken, it didn't get a second. It's not, if not, is not what the public has to say as important as what you board members have to say? In fact, is it not more important, what the public has to say? Because you work for us. I know, having talked to Dr. Mr. Martin, that by Florida statute, this does not even have to be recorded, but let's do a little bit more than the minimum.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherosea.
Next speaker is Mr. Anthony Thomas.
Evening, Madam Chairman, distinguished board members, Dr. Graham. My name is Anthony Thomas. I want to just comment briefly about a man that I've known or knew, Mrs. Sariani. I remember when I was a student at Fort Myers High, Coach Sammy would say, "Anthony, you're too big not to be playing football. You need to be playing a lineman for my team." I said, "Well, I don't play sports, I do politics." So I can tell you, he was a great man. I know, Mrs. Sariani, we thank you for coming here. The Sariani family, I just love them. Coach Sammy was a teacher of mine. I'm just a big fan of the Sariani family, and I'm so pleased that the school board honored Coach Sammy this evening. I'd like to discuss a couple other issues, if I may. The first issue I'd like to discuss and say, I actually agree with Mrs. Morgan. I think you've made a very wise decision, and trying to work in a collaborative fashion with your colleagues to withdraw your support for having a national search. Clearly, the majority of the board wished not to have the search. We didn't need to have the expenses. I'm excited to have a woman chairman and a woman as the superintendent. That's something I had talked about several times in the past. What I'd like to talk about tonight, though, is the school board voted several months ago, when Dr. Burke was here, that they would have a student serving on the board. Now, with the school year beginning, I was hoping that we could have had the student seated to serve on the school board as a non-voting member. I've reached out to Dr. Graham and requested to schedule a meeting with her, so we can get this thing accomplished. I understand that Dr. Graham wants to have a student advisory council to the school superintendent. I think both things could work together. Originally, when this thing come up for discussion for the board, it was a superintendent committee, a school superintendent advisory council. That can work in conjunction with having a student from that body serve as an ex-official member of the school board. What I would like to see happen is the school board or the superintendent to convene the 12 over 13 high school student body presidents in her conference room, let them take a vote, those 12 people who are elected by the student bodies at their school, and allow them to pick who they, who should serve for a year term up here on this dais, to give the students perspective. So I think this can be done quickly. I really think that we need to have student representation on the school board. The last thing I want to talk about is I hope that we're moving forward with the African-American Hispanic Advisory Board. We have a majority of three. We had a very good meeting with Mr. Scott some months ago. He agreed that if we had a sunset provision on the boards, that we would have the four votes we need to have the supermajority. I hope that the time for delay is over. We really need these boards. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next on the agenda is the approval of actions. Next on the agenda is the approval of action items under consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? Mrs. Dozier.
I have no pulls this evening, thank you.
Mrs. Morgan.
I have none.
Mr. Armstrong.
I have none this evening.
Mr. Scott.
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items this evening?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Scott, second by Mrs. Dozier. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda is superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Graham.
First recommendation, I recommend board approval to change the school bell times for Benita Springs Elementary School and Franklin Park Elementary School for the 2013-14 school year, as described above, and authorize the superintendent to adjust school bell times at these two schools, plus or minus fifteen minutes from the board-adopted bell times to meet the educational needs of students and to improve efficiency within our transportation system where and when possible.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Supported by Mrs. Morgan and supported by Mr. Armstrong.
Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier.
Was this something that was a collaborative decision when this was by the staff there?
This is a result that last year the hour was required because they were on the bottom one hundred list. They're no longer on that list, so the time is no longer required.
Okay, all right, thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you. Then, board members, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item, C, Dr. Graham.
I recommend board approval of the inter-local agreement with the Lee County Sheriff's Office for the continuation of the School Resource Officer Program for August 11th, 2013, to August 10th, 2014, at a cost of $1,600,000.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion?
I have.
Mr. Armstrong.
How many SRO officers will be in elementary schools, or is this just for what we have now?
This is what was currently budgeted. So the elementary schools were working through a plan so they know who to call if they need an SRO.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Dozier.
I'd just like to say that it's always, we've always had a very good relationship with the sheriff's office, and Sheriff Scott and his officers have done such a good job working with our schools, and they have actually thwarted quite a bit of activity that could have occurred because of the relationships that they build with schools. And I just, from one board member, really appreciate all the dedication and all the work that they put into caring about our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier, and I'd like to echo that. Is there any other discussion, board members? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item D, Dr. Graham.
I recommend board approval of the estimated annual expenditure of $2 million for RFP number R127066JM, awarded to Telecommunications Connections of Florida Incorporated for the period of September 11th, 2013, through September 10th, 2014, and authorization for the superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Second, moved by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? Then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda is board attorney's recommendations. Anything this evening, Mr. Martin?
None this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we're down to board members' comments and reports. Okay, Mr. Scott.
Yes. Based on our workshop that we had on the fifteenth, aye, and our discussion regarding the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion at this point in time. I move to rescind the June 4th, 2013 board action to direct staff to prepare and issue an RFP for a superintendent search firm by October 1st, 2013.
Thank you. Board members, we have a motion to rescind the June 4th board action to direct staff to prepare and issue an RFP for a superintendent search. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any other discussion, board members? Mrs. Dozier.
Well, there was some public comment about this this evening, and while I was not at the June meeting and was not able to voice my opinion, I commend my fellow board members for making the decision that they have made. Because as we all know, there is a lot of momentum that is going in the district in a very positive direction, and we have not had any of that momentum in the last eighteen months, anyway. And I applaud your decision, because, you know, they say the mark of a good leader is when they can change their mind. And I think that all of us have seen that to do a search right now would actually create almost a level of lack of trust, if you will, in the superintendent, because it would show that we really don't have the trust in the superintendent. And so I will be supporting this, and again, I applaud you all for making that decision. And, Ms. Morgan, I thank you for taking the front, taking the front and center position on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Any other comments, board members? Mr. Armstrong.
I actually will not be supporting this tonight, for the simple reason, I made a promise, and I'm a firm believer to stick to what I promised in my word. I've actually had a very lengthy conversation with Dr. Graham earlier about this, and I just feel very strongly, although she is doing a good job, I do have a lot of support in her. I've had a great communications with her, but I still, I gave my word for something. And I'm a man of my word, and I always have been and always will be. So I will stick to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And I want to say that I also gave my word in an effort for collegiality and to work with my fellow board members. Subsequent to that, there have been many, many comments from staff and from people in the community, saying, "Why are you going to waste the money to do that? Why do you not give your new superintendent an opportunity to continue with the forward movement that she's begun?" So it's a woman's prerogative to change her mind, so I'm doing that. Any other comments?
I don't want to follow that one.
I'm not even touching it.
Then, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four to one.
May I continue now?
Yes, Mr. Scott, you may continue. Thank you.
I have a question for Dr. Graham regarding the SES program. The legislature actually, I think, did us a favor this year and turned the administration of those programs back to us. So I'd just like a little snapshot of where we are at this point in time.
Where we are is that, as a matter of fact, we're going to talk about it in cabinet tomorrow, but the Teaching and Learning Division has come up with a proposal that will determine how we distribute the dollars that are available for that and how we involve community vendors as well as school-based. And our intention is to do a full briefing with the board on September 10th to share that information. The, it appeared, because I even asked the question, "Why are we not doing this right now?" There is only the opportunity for forty hours of instruction with SES, and so to wait a little while is more beneficial to the students, as it will be closer to when they really, when they really will feel the need for the instruction, because as the data continues, we'll begin assessing very soon, and as data grows and we get more information, we'll know better what the students need, and they'll be more open, I think, to the extra instruction, because they will also know what they need. So it's coming, but there will be a briefing on September 10th to share that information in detail.
So our options will be displayed at that point in time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Whether we're going to do it in-house or whether we're going to...
Our intention is to do a combination. We have a large enough district that I think that would be in our best interest and in the best interest of the children.
I would be interested if we're going to use providers, who may have been involved in the past, to see what the results of their work have been. Because the comments I get back from a variety of people who have been participants and otherwise observing, they're not all consistent in terms of what they're delivering for students. So I would hope that if we're going to do an RFP to get providers, that we somehow stipulate in there. Past performance does have a considerable impact on who's going to get contracts to perform this year.
I believe, and I'm looking at, Mrs. Kooch, to be sure I'm not lying, but I believe that the intention is, if we do indeed do the RFP process, and that's one of the options we're going to share with you, that data will be part of the expectation in the proposal to show what data they have. Correct? Go ahead, Chrissy.
At a hybrid version of, like you said, in June, then chancellor, now commissioner, Pam Stewart, gave us some flexibility in how we use these dollars. And so one of the things that we're looking at is a hybrid model, where some of the dollars are used in-house, as well as some of them going out, and an RFP process. We're putting that process together. We're looking at how to get the most out of those dollars in terms of the opportunities for our students. So that is definitely part of the RFP process. Yes, sir.
I think it's a very important program to bring people along who are, for whatever set of reasons, are not performing as well as they should, and not looking for minimal improvement, but significant improvement to get them to grade level and/or beyond.
That's the need for data from those that have done it before.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Proceed.
Yes, please proceed, Mr. Scott.
I want to make a couple of comments on a conversation we had at the meeting on the fifteenth regarding the vision of the district. I'm still troubled that I can't get my arms around what being world-class is all about. But to me, being world-class means you're something big and something different than everybody else. And I just want to throw again, I've thrown a couple of these ideas out in the past, but I want to do them again. I really get concerned about spreading what we have to offer too thin, and not concentrating it in the places where we can really impact the future for our kids. I think we have to take a very hard look at K through three and over-commit ourselves to making sure those students get everything they need, so that when they exit the third grade, they are in fact at third grade level. Because what we spend money on after that is trying to get people to the level they should be. And everything I read tells me that if they leave third grade ill-prepared to make the next step, the chances of ever getting to the next step are significantly diminished, and that only increases as time moves on. So I don't know what form that should take, but I do think we have to make a commitment to those K through three grades. And along with that, I think we have to do something that parallel-trains parents in how to be involved in the academic success of their children. That seems to me to be a missing piece, and I sound like a broken record for three years, but the parent engagement, the parent involvement, the parent understanding of what's happening, and their participation in it becomes critically important. So we need to establish whatever that training is and find the, excuse me, the resources somewhere to meaningfully empower them so they can help with the increased academic achievement of their children. It's not a job we're doing alone. It's a job that we have to do with the families. And then my, the other thought I have in terms of creating a world-class district, I've shared before, and that is that I believe we ought to look seriously at creating our own charter academies. One for STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. That becomes a highly competitive situation for entry, not just open to anybody, but open to potential superstar students. And the other would be a classics academy, where we get to the real heavy thinking part, the study of philosophers, Latin, Greek, those kinds of things. And I believe we have a population that would allow us to have two charter schools operating with a couple of hundred students in each one of them, and that would make us different. That would make us world-class. So I would ask my colleagues to think about that, and certainly the superintendent and her staff to think about that as well. And I have one more thing I'd like to ask.
Yes, please proceed.
And this would be to Mr. Martin. In terms of the expulsion hearings that we have periodically, do we serve as a quasi-judicial body during those processes?
Yes, sir, you do, especially with respect to those to go to a hearing. Yes, you do, because you're taking action based upon the recommendation of that hearing officer. That's a quasi-judicial function.
Then, does that provide a subpoena power as a board?
Well, the hearing officer has some level of subpoena power, but not to the level of a court. He can issue a subpoena, but it does not have the force of a court in terms of the potential for sanctions for failure to comply.
The reason I'm asking the question is, I am troubled at how many times we sit here, and there is no parent, there's no guardian, there's no student. And if we had a subpoena power, or something that could be exercised to demand presence of those people, I think we would have a much better shot at changing some of that behavior than by our sitting here, talking to each other, and saying, "Oh, my, ain't it awful? Ain't it terrible?" when we're not really getting to the subject of the problem. So I'm not hearing you say, "Absolutely, we don't," but it might be a different way.
Well, actually, in that context, sir, your question being whether the school board has authority to issue a subpoena for a student and/or parent to attend those expulsion hearings, the answer is no. Certainly, we can communicate that expectation as an important element of the board's consideration and the decision that they're going to make with respect to that recommendation for expulsion. But the legal advice is there, no, there is not subpoena authority.
One more thing. I've watched bits and pieces of the governor's confab over the last couple of days, and it's mostly they're not on camera, and in a very short, short period of time, they come back and talk regarding accountability standards and where we're going in the future. And I know that Jeff McCullers has issued some notes on his viewing of that over the last couple of days, and there's another day to go. I think it's well worth our spending a little time to go through that and see what's really happening up there and what some of the changes might be, and getting the benefit of Jeff's viewpoint on what he has seen. But I think it's a very important discussion that's going on, because it will impact everybody sitting up at this table, but more importantly, everybody who's working in our schools, and most of all, our kids going forward. So we have to pay attention to that. Thank you for indulging me.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Mr. Armstrong?
I have a few things, and I'll keep most of them pretty brief. First, just want to, you know, I've been out to some schools lately, and it's been very impressive how some of these schools have been running just smoothly. And to see these students, and they're excited to learn, they're happy to be there. My two of themselves have been, you know, every day they keep coming home telling me something different and new, and it's great to see that. And it's great to talk to some of these other parents who have the same experience. I thought I'd share that with everybody today. The other thing I did want to bring up, I was going to talk a little bit more in depth about this, but I think I'll keep from putting too much out there, but the land that we own right now off of Diplomat, Diplomat, Del Prado Extension, I'm the board member who's brought that up. I just, today, received some information, some more information. So before I bring up a motion, I do want to look at that a little bit closer. The other thing, Dr. Graham, we had a thing on parent communication today at the briefing meeting. I'd like to see if maybe at the action meeting, we could bring something like that to the action meeting. action meeting and some type of staff presentation to maybe reach out to some more people, because I know a lot of people watch this at night. And I think Tom hit that right on the head, Mr. Scott did. The parent involvement is the key. It always seems to be the key. And I think it's important that we try to get that message out there as much as we possibly can. Mr. Barnes, Common Core. Yeah, I've done my own research. I'm not real thrilled with it either. I've spoke publicly about it, and I will, again, that's how I feel, and it's just the way it's going to be. You know, I'm not a fond person of that, and I've done a lot of research, and I continue to read some things. It's very scary. The other thing is, Mr. Scott, you have my full support on the charter with the STEAM. We've talked about this in the past, and I agreed with you then. I'll agree with you 100% now. It is the perfect thing for us to do. And I just want to make sure publicly, you know, you have my support on that. I will support you on that idea. I think it's the right way, and we could bring this district to a different level. The other thing I do want to talk about real quick, and it's just to inform everybody, tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 p.m., North Fort Myers Cabinet Arts is having a steel band concert at Cypress Cove. I'll be there. I've invited Dr. Graham, and I'd like to see if any, you know, invite the rest of the board members to go out there and watch some of these students. I've seen these students play in the past, and they're impressive every time. If you don't walk out there with your feet twitching and just in a good mood, I don't know what's going to put anybody in a good mood. It's just always great to see these kids and just what they've done and accomplishments and the music they play. So I'd like to invite everybody out to Cypress Cove tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. and watch these kids and the steel drums. Now, that is all I have, Ms. Fisher. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Mrs. Morgan?
Yes, I have comments this evening. First of all, with respect to the consent agenda, I'd just like to make two observations. First of all, to the Construction and Maintenance Department, we approved final payments on outstanding contracts on which the district saved close to $2 million, and I think that the work of that department needs to be recognized. Also, we approved a formal agreement between Lee County School District and Edison regarding student credits toward the criminal justice program. And I just want to acknowledge our continued effort to work with other educational providers to maximize opportunities for our students. I've had several people in the community comment to me about the lack of books available to elementary students for the new curriculum, and I've heard that it may be a publishing problem, delay, delayed delivery of books. I've also heard it might be an internal problem. I just wanted the board to know that I suggested to the superintendent that I think in the future, when we have contracts ordering textbooks, that we put penalties in for non-performance, for non-delivery of textbooks. I've attended a couple of meetings in the last week. Mr. Scott, I attended Head Start. Due to sequestration, we lost 36 seats. There's part of the problem we have with early education. And again, they, also of interest to you, they said that their professional learning community goal for this year is to move every child and every family ahead. So I thought you'd be interested in knowing that. Also, because they had such a successful federal review last year, they are looking at applying for a five-year extension of their grant instead of the traditional three-year extension. So I think that's an acknowledgement of the great work they're doing in that program. I also had the opportunity to visit with Dr. Butts at Mariner High School, and he gave me a terrific tour. And part of the tour was to meet with Sergeant Major Humphries, who is responsible for the ROTC program. And what I learned there is that Dr. Butts, in talking to the ROTC people last year about what they were doing in their program, learned that they are doing some terrific work orienting small groups of ninth-grade students to the high school. And Dr. Butts decided that this would be a great orientation for all of the students in the high school, and as a consequence, he's worked with the ROTC staff to create an academy, essentially a leadership academy, for entering ninth graders that breaks them up into small groups and provides some concrete, ongoing orientation to high school that will make them feel more confident and comfortable in starting out on their high school path. So I wanted to commend them for that pilot, and I think, I hope they're on the right track. I know they'll be studying any changes in culture as a result of that. Mr. Barnes, we are having a briefing and a workshop on Common Core in September. I hope you will be there. Mr. Scott, I hear what you have to say about programs that you're interested in, but I consider those to be part of a strategic planning process that this board and this administration have not yet engaged in. I understand that we will be doing it post the accreditation process because we don't have time to embark on a full strategic plan at this point, but I think that's where those recommendations belong. And those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Dozier?
Thank you. Several of us had the opportunity to attend the Greater Florida Consortium Legislative Meeting, and we put together a legislative platform that was, I think, very succinct with what our goals are as far as a district, and we should be bringing that. Mr. Scott, I think, is going to lead the effort in bringing that forth to the board, and I certainly will be supporting it. As far as Common Core, there's been a lot of conversation, and I think, Mr. Barnes, I actually asked the superintendent to have a staff member send some information to you. And I believe Mr. McCullers responded to you with some information.
There's general stuff that's available from the government website, which is not accurate. Thank you.
Okay. I have had my own research, and I have also worked with some individuals that are leading a charge against Common Core, and they have a website up. And I would, just like I told them, we have to look at both sides of the issue. I had the opportunity to speak on Common Core recently, and at the end of the meeting, they said, well, we can't decide which side you're on. And so that means that I must have done a pretty good job showing both sides of the issue, because no one could tell which side I was on, or, you know, whether I was in favor of Common Core, whether I was not in favor of it. I think that anytime there's something new, there's some, there is something that, you know, it's very difficult for people to hold on to, for people to change. Common Core is kind of scary. A lot of the stuff that is going on with that, and as long as we are being directed to have Common Core standards, then we have to follow what is being directed to us by the Department of Education. I know that I have had the opportunity to talk to some of our legislators, and some of our legislators are actually in the process of putting forth legislation that would give them oversight of decisions such as this. If a decision was making, was made independently, then they would be able to say, no, we don't agree with that. We want it to come before us first so that we can approve of it. The conversation will continue, and it's, as I said, it's a subject that there's going to be a lot of conversation around it, a lot of conversation. There's some people that are very much in favor of it. There are some people that are very, very opposed. There are some people that are still on the fence. As long as we are getting directed that that is what we will do, that is what we will have to do. So with that being, with that being said, I certainly understand your position, and I wish you the best with generating some passion with your position. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll thank my fellow board members for all of their comments, and I won't be redundant in repeating any of that, except to say that I think it's critically important for us to continue to support early childhood education and the Early Childhood Learning Coalition because that is where it all begins, and they are the ones who are initiating the contact with the parents and helping them to understand what they need to do to help their kids be successful in school. I also want to thank all of our staff members, the people at the schools, the parents and the kids who have come together to set the stage for a wonderful new school year. The comments out there are extremely positive, so we want to keep our heads together and keep that going. And that is it for me tonight, and so I'll move right on to Dr. Graham.
I was going to say, I do not want to usurp, Mr. Barnes.
Go ahead.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
No more legal minutes. Okay.
Not today.
Not a legal hour?
First thing I'd like to do is introduce, and I'll have to learn if I'm supposed to do this after we do the consent agenda, but the people that we appointed tonight into new administrative positions. And so my understanding is that Johnny Hawkins is here. She's been appointed Assistant Principal, ALC. She's not excited at all. She ran up to me in the hall last week and said, guess where I'm going. She was very excited, so we're happy to have her join the ranks of the administration. Francine King, is she here? Yes, she is. Great. She's going to be in grants and program development. Thank you, Francine. Lana Gatewood, Assistant Director, Title I. And Gwendolyn, I saw Ken. Is Gwendolyn here? Gwendolyn and her whole family, it looks like. Welcome, Veterans Park Academy for the Arts. Congratulations and welcome to a really exciting part of your professional journey. If you have any questions, there's a whole bunch of people in the audience that can tell you the real story. Other things, and these are in no particular order. We are moving forward. We talked at the workshop about briefings and workshops, and so what we've done with the calendar from now until December, and then we'll revisit it at the end of December, the first meeting of each month, we'll have a briefing at 2:00. The second meeting of each month, we'll have a workshop, and that, through December is based on the topics we came up with at the workshop. If you continue to have things you want workshop, then we'll continue to add dates. But it will be, the first one will be the briefing, second meeting will be workshop. And we have, I sent you all an email, and no one seemed to object, so we will have Common Core be the first topic of the workshop, and that'll be on September 20 -- what's the, what's the, 24th, thank you. September 24th, that workshop, that's when that'll occur. Secondly, student advisory, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas left, but the student advisory, the children have been elected, and our first meeting is September 26th. I'm still a little unclear on if you want one child from that group to be sitting with you at the dais, or you just want them in the meeting. But whatever, whatever it is you all direct, I'm going to talk to the students about that, and we'll come up with a way for them to decide who that is. But the advisory is in place. The children have been selected. Our first meeting is at 5:00 on September 26th. So if you want to think about that and get back to me with what, I'm still a little unclear even, I looked at the, I looked at the agenda item that addressed that, and I'm just a little unclear on exactly where you want that child. If you want them up here, you just want the kids at the meeting? So you'll just have to tell me that between now and September 26th so I know how to direct them. So maybe at the September 10th meeting or in our meetings prior to that, you all can give me your thoughts on that so we know how to craft that meeting. Okay. Let's see. Interesting that the, Mr. Scott, your comments about training parents. We had a meeting with a group today, and we talked a lot about what we might do to help parents. And we've got some thoughts in place that we will at some point brief with you, but we want to offer some parent training in a variety of areas and encourage parents to be a part of it. And we met with the Nehemiah Connection, is that what they're called? Nehemiah? Is it Connection? Is that the name of that group?
That was their action. It's Lee Interfaith for Empowerment.
Okay. It's the Lee Interfaith for Empowerment. I met with their small group today, and that was one of the groups that, and we talked to them about, we are willing to reach out and if they can help us by getting parents to respond when we do that. So it's interesting you brought up today, that conversation just took place today. So parent engagement, parent assistance, I'm unsure we can teach them how to parent, but we can certainly give them some strategies to help them. So that's in the works, and we will keep you informed on that as it evolves. The Governor Summit, I emailed you Mr. McCullers' notes for the first two days, and he's going to be unable to watch it live tomorrow, but Mrs. Kinsey has agreed to take that on, and so she will do something similar to what Mr. McCullers has done, and I will forward those to you at the end of the day tomorrow so you have them. And then I'm sure we'll get, and I think one of the things Mr. McCullers sent us was that we will be getting an official summary of some sort, but I thought it was important that someone see it live. So we get our summary, and then we'll see how it compares to whoever sends the Governor Summary when it's finished. But you'll get one final set of notes tomorrow until we get something official. And the, Mr. Armstrong mentioned the land on Del Prado, and I have sent you now two sets of information, and I told him I was going to do that so that all of you have the same information when he brings it forward. You'll be coming with the same reference point. So I'm looking that that'll be a discussion you all at some point in the future. And then finally, I want to, well, two other things. One, I want to thank you for the vote of confidence. I am grateful for, I've told you this, I feel privileged and honored to be able to lead this district, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have the staff all across the system relax and know that we can move forward without a search looming over us. So I'm grateful for that. And finally, I want to congratulate you as the very first Lee County School Board to take ongoing paperless. And I know it's a challenge, but we are going to continue to work to make it easier for you. But it's very exciting that we didn't have to print all those pages, and we didn't have to deliver all those pages. And personally, I thank you, and I know the staff is most grateful for your willingness to play. So it's a good thing. It's really, and that would be staff clapping. And then I think that's it. Yeah, I want to congratulate you on the paperless effort. So thank you.
Thank you. We're looking forward to proceeding. The next scheduled meetings of the board are September 10th, 2013 is a school board briefing meeting, or maybe that would be a workshop since today was a briefing.
No, it, no, it starts, the sequence starts in September, so we will have a briefing on the 10th.
Okay, so that will be a briefing meeting at 2:00 p.m., followed by a special school board meeting to adopt the fiscal year 14 final budget at 5:05 p.m., as well as the school board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So I'll move.
Support.
Mr. Scott, and supported by Mr. Armstrong, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Safe home.